...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Sleep?
Here.
Fraser?
Here.
Wees?
Here.
Addy?
Here.
Elder?
Here.
Leibel?
Here.
Reese? Did we get a copy of the minutes? Thank you so much. Okay, so everybody got a copy of the minutes? Anyways, are there any changes to the minutes? Is there anything to add to the agenda tonight? Okay, well, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Gross, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you very much, Madam President. Do you want to make the introduction of Mr. Schwartz? Yeah, I'd like to introduce, uh, which many of you may know, Lee Schwartz and then Randall Duncan. Uh, I'll go ahead and get started and then Lee if I'm, you know, if I jump in.
Okay.
All right. Uh, as many of you know, the old Willsey Cemetery at the end of, uh, Wayne Street there has been, uh, our responsibility as a city, City Council for several years, and members of council have done a great job each year to go out there and plant flowers. But lately, myself, Mayor Kimbrough, Randall and Lee have been meeting to discuss to make improvements to that cemetery. If you are familiar, and I think Randall's got a picture, there are broken headstones that are laid down flat and stacked up. I think, how many do you think are in that stack?
Probably 200.
Probably over 200 headstones. And so, um, we are in the process of putting a plan together, and Lee is really driving that plan. What he has so far is really good. And ideally, we want to figure out how to fix what is a problem. You know, try to memorialize some of those headstones, some of which may be our family members or, you know, from generations ago. And I was just sharing with Lee, after we met this week, I went home and I was just thinking about it. And I started to Google, "How do you memorialize those stones?" And every cemetery's come up a couple different ways to do that. In addition, and I think some of you may know, we, I think Danny brought up the idea of a fence. And a couple of years ago, we took a fence down at the rec center. And we, um, were planning to repurpose that. And so, I think we want to move forward with some of this. Exactly how it looks, if you exact, if you ask me the exact plan, we're just not there yet because, uh, we've got some cost estimates, but it could be costly, and it may have to be layered in phases. But I think one of the things we'd like to do sooner rather than later is try to repurpose that fence from the rec center and then figure out, you know, because that's a beautification piece, and, um, we can do that. Maybe additional funds, whatnot, if we thought of when we go into the 25 budget for it. And then really, but really the purpose is beautify it, put a nice fence around there. Uh, but we really should recognize those, those stones and figure out a way to memorialize those and, and recognize, because it really is, uh, it's a civil, well, a lot of some Civil War, uh, headstones, those who fought in the Civil War.
Civil War.
Yeah, left from some Revolutionary War. And so, uh, so there are some war veterans in that stack of 200 that have just kind of been busted off years ago and stacked up. And so, um, we wanted to bring that to your attention, because really on paper, you got, I mean, we, we know it's 100 years old, so nobody's holding you accountable to it. It's really a team effort that we're gonna try to correct that, but, um, uh, but, you know, and it may be, and we're, you know, I think really it's a money thing. I think we're gonna talk about applying for some grants, maybe we would do some, uh, fundraising event of somehow to get some funds there. And if that's poss, you know, if, if we get our plans figured out just a little bit better, we may ask your help in some ways, if you have access or a willingness to ask a couple of friends and family donate a little bit here and there to kind of correct that, or some in-kind service, and we've done that in the past with different organizations around our community. Mojer's been a great group to do some in-kind things like that around town. And, uh, some of the unions have been great to offer up their, their services for, um, to memorialize our, our fallen veterans that really need to kind of be picked back up. So, I don't know if, uh, Lee, if there's anything you want to jump in here. I don't want to, I know this is, and this is, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm speaking tonight, but this is really Lee's driving this. This is his passion, and we just want to support his passion.
Uh, I'm not new, and I don't mean no disrespect by not standing, but I'm gonna have to page through some of this stuff. But, uh, there's over 300 people that were buried in Upper Sandusky Cemetery. That's the, the legal name of that cemetery. And I, I'm just curious, as many council member and people that are here, how many have not ever been in that cemetery? I would say the majority of Fremonters haven't. And Randy and I, we strolled through there again today. And I, I guess there's, there's just one, one word that really describes it. It's an embarrassment, and it's disgusting. There's over 200 headstones that are piled on top of one another. Talk about disrespect. These are the pioneers, these are our ancestors, and they're probably related to you, and you don't even know it. Besides that, we still, we still should have a little honor. The, the park has been ignored, things have been started, flowers have been planted, but that's, that's, it needs a lot, a lot, and they deserve that. Uh, I would recommend that take a walk through there and see what you see. And if you don't walk out of there disgusted, uh, it's all our faults. It's, it's everybody's fault, not City Council, not anybody in particular. It's just that out of sight, out of mind. It, it's so hidden away, it, it, it's been a playground for our children, and it's been like that for 200 years. And it's gonna continue. The only way to secure this, this, this ground of honor is to put a prison-type fence around it. And I know that that won't set well with, with the idea, because they don't sound right. Well, if you don't, any work that you do is gonna be in vain. Our kids as kids as kids are gonna continue to vandalize that. I've got articles from Spiegel Grove over 100 years ago where kids use that as a playground. And it's fun to knock over headstones. It, it's, it's a lot of fun. So they think, "I've got an estimate on the fence." Now, if you don't agree with the fence, you're, you're, you're fighting a losing battle. You've gotta keep kids out of that park. That's the only way it's gonna survive. How it's lasted this long is, it's beyond me. But all those headstones that are even standing and/or stacked, and by the way, I'll tell you how that happened. I think the Fremont VFW did the most honorable thing by stacking those. They were, they were all over the hillside, down on South Street, used as patios. Yeah, headstones, putting their grills on and, and, and really not caring what, anyway. The VFW members, they did the best thing that they could to honor them, and they placed them, the only place they could, on top of one another, and they put a fence around it. We can do better than that, we can do a lot better. And it's just, before you even decide whether to do this, I think I'd take a walk through that park. And, uh, park, walk through that cemetery and see what, what we've done and what we haven't done. You'll get a good idea, it won't be dead of what's what and what hasn't been done. And they deserve a hell of a lot better. Fundraising, I'm not a, I'm not, uh, I did the, the park across from the county courthouse. That was a, that was labor of love. And, and I would do the same thing in the cemetery. And that's, that's a...
One thing I can tell you, Lee, is the flag pole and that iron will be painted. I've already contacted somebody to get that done. Which I'd like to see two new flags plus the final plaque on that pole, if possible, for next year, when we get it done.
I'm curious, what would the neighbors think of a prison-type fence? And I, and I say a prison-type, I'm not talking about a decorative, uh, baseball park fence. I'm talking that like an eight to 10 foot with Kozantin, not Kozantin, but barbed wire. Has to be locked every day. It's got to be locked, I'm sorry, every night. The local police might suggest would be, uh, if the chief would agree, block it at, uh, every night. Every night, pull it back up. All that vandalism is occurring in the dark.
One thing...
Writing would be needed.
I, I think one thing too, if you can remember the name of Andrew Lumisch. L-U-M-I-S-H. He's out in New Jersey. Pull him up on Facebook. What he has done, you've, you've seen, anybody seen that Facebook?
I have.
What he has done to tombstones to bring them back to life is absolutely amazing. So I will leave a message for him to see if he's sometime passing through the area, and he can take a look.
The majority of those graves, those markers, they're the wind, the rain, the snow, uh, it's sandstone, and they just wore away. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be viable, you're not.
Well, it's amazing, some of the...
Okay, okay, well, maybe I shouldn't say it like that, but there are some that you can't even, you, you can't even, you know, ignore to start.
Lee, I can attest, going to Stom through, uh, the late 60s, I'd say 67, 68, that was a pathway for us kids.
Aids.
Still lives. Or aids, what did I say?
Still lives.
Yeah, and, uh, I remember seeing visibly, seeing some of his tombstones down, and it got me as a kid, you know, I thought, wow, that's...
You should see them, you should see them all now.
You know, and we're talking late 60s.
Angie?
Yes, I'd like to just say that during the time that Danny and I had worked out there, and Danny and I are the only ones that really go out there and work.
Hey.
I was glowing Wednesday morning because of the poison ivy that I got. But anyhow, what I wanted to say was that the people, some of the neighbors, not all of them, the one lady, she says she's lived there for 30 years. She says they never see anybody there. And there was some other man, but I don't remember where he was from, but they said the same thing, that they never see anybody going out there, you know, trying to fix it up or anything, other than when we go out there and do the flowers.
You've gotta have commitment. You gotta have somebody that's gonna take charge of this and do it, rather than talk about it. This has been talked about how many times throughout the years? I, I, I wouldn't even know, I wouldn't even guess.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Um, first, I'd like to say thank you to Bob Gross for, for making the introduction. But we've, during one of the meeting, during the meeting that we had with Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Duncan, one of the things that, uh, that he was kind of asking permission from me as the mayor, and I just didn't feel that I was the person to be able to authorize that permission, which is why one of the things we wanted to do was, uh, was to talk to City Council. I think what Mr. Schwartz is asking is, he's asking for the blessing of City Council to figure out a way in which City Council would allow him to lead this project, you know, lead this initiative. Uh, because when he, when I worked with him, and I know we worked with many people, but when I worked with him specifically on the, on the park, uh, that, um, Veterans Park, Lee was one of the, the big initiatives, uh, helping fundraise for that and going out and meeting with different donors, different leaders of the community, different elected officials. And for those that were on City Council back then, if you remember, uh, the city of Fremont made a commitment, a financial commitment to Veterans Park. And I know that initially, when Mr. Schwartz and I had that conversation, I wasn't real sure how council would feel about making a commitment, because that technically is a county park and not a city park. However, council did go strongly about, on supporting that initiative and Veterans Park. And, uh, some of the council members that are here were a part of making that, um, decision to support that financially, to help bring that park to fruition along with other community leaders and other elected officials. Uh, and Mr. Schwartz was asking me on what it would take or how he would go about getting, uh, council's blessing to allow him to be the lead on this project. Uh, he wants to be the lead on the project, he wants to fundraise, he wants to set up the bank accounts, he wants to do all of the legwork that is, uh, that needs to be done. But in a very respectful way, he also said that, "Mayor, I know, nothing against you, I, I respect you and I appreciate council, but I don't want to be micromanaged under, under leading this project either. I just, I want to know how, how, if City Council would be interested in giving me the blessing to lead this project." Is that fair, Mr. Schwartz?
Absolutely.
Mayor Sanchez?
I'm not a stranger to, to fix things up, I'm not a stranger at all.
I just don't feel that I have the authority to give him that way.
I understand that, but what I'm going to say is that, I think our law director should check into that ordinance that says that we on City Council are supposed to maintain that, and then we can work together with you. We are not gonna hold you back. I don't think, I can, I can speak for the rest of these people, that we will allow you to, to do what is best for, for that area here. But I think that you should look into the ordinance to see what it says, so that, you know, we know what we're doing. That's all. I, I just think that everybody, there will probably be an agreement.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was part of the reasoning, uh, for Mr. Schwartz to come here tonight to speak to council, to be able to have this conversation publicly with City Council. Mr. Duncan, as you know, uh, is a city employee, he's a great city employee. And, uh, he also asked how he could volunteer in his personal time to help support these efforts, which is the reasoning for him attending the meeting today. I don't know where we go from here, Madam President, I would leave that up to you.
What?
With Mr. Schwartz on, where do we go from here?
I just have one question. You know, we have those funds, oh, are they wolf park funds or the funds that, that trust?
The trust.
Is, does the cemetery qualify?
I don't think it does.
I mean, it's, it's historical.
We had that discussion, uh, in fact, we had that discussion in our meeting, uh, the other day. And, um, Mr. Frost and Mr. Gross and I just didn't know because of the specific language. I don't know if those dollars are to be used for a park if this is a cemetery. And the auditor's not here tonight, I know he is. And I do have that information in my office, uh, but I don't, I don't want to say yes or no. I think it's something that it could be visited to see if, if some of those dollars would apply. We also talked about potentially looking at, looking at historical grants and other things. Uh, but I will say this, Mr. Schwartz didn't seem to have too much concern with, um, having the ability to raise the money. Uh, he felt that, given the blessings of council, that he would finalize his plans and that he would, uh, obviously appreciate the dollars that the city would be able to contribute to help. But he specifically said to me, "This isn't anything I'm counting on, and I don't expect the city to be able to come up with the only funding for this."
Correct.
"I'm asking for the city to give me, uh, the blessing to create a, a fund through a bank, to be able to fundraise, to be able to put some marketing material together, the same way that I did when I did, uh, VFW Park." Uh, and he said that he would prepare them plans and present them to council, so council could, could see them plans. But he just didn't want to take any step further from today without council giving him that blessing. And I didn't feel comfortable giving him that blessing, because it is technically according to the ordinance. Uh, and I would say we're all a team, but on the ordinance, it appears to be a City Council. I don't know how that ever happened that way.
We didn't have anything to do with it, so it isn't our work.
But we're here today, as he said, and, uh, he's asking me, and I just have never experienced anything like this, so I'm looking for a direction from council, I'm looking for a direction from the law director. I didn't feel comfortable giving Mr. Schwartz any information. The only thing I could do was have the meeting, listen to the idea, and, uh, asked him, and he asked me if this was something that he should talk to council about. In fact, he was pretty persistent that he wanted to come to council and wanted to make sure that, that I was in support of it as well as the mayor.
Well, I agree with, with Angie's suggestion, council, councilwoman's suggestion a minute ago.
I think we should have a copy of that and then take it from there. And like you said, we're not gonna object, but we've gotta go according to that ordinance. You know, if it says that we have to go pull out every daisy, then John and me and Chris, we don't.
I certainly want to oppose, you, you as a group don't have to say yes or no tonight. Talk amongst yourselves, go look and, and see what, and talk to Jim, and see what, see what, it, it's just, it's overwhelming, but I'm not afraid of it. I'm not afraid. When you look around and you see bodies that are actually buried, it's going down a hill, and with trees growing around on top of it, it's just, it's wrong, it's wrong. Take a walk through there, and you'll appreciate what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So then we'll, Mr. Law Director, will you give us a copy of that ordinance?
Yeah, assuming it's actually not a state law, that's what I'll find out.
You can find out.
I will.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
See you.
See you, Randy.
Take care.
I mean, maybe you were supposed to...
I've never been...
I grew up in East Corvus, I didn't... I was gonna say, I knew you would relate to what I said.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's start the readings.
Second reading of an ordinance to authorize the expenditure and direct safety service director to enter into a contract with D2 Escalating LLC in the amount not to exceed $334,865.00 for the North Prospect Sewer Relocation Project and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend Rule 4.
A second.
Angie moves to suspend Rule 4.
Chris is the one we were gonna do.
Angie Reeves. And who seconded it? Jim Sleep seconds. Uh, any questions about the suspension of Rule 4? Okay, roll call.
Fraser?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibel?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleep?
Yes.
Moves to adopt, second.
Chris Leibel moves to adopt, John Elder seconds. Any questions about this ordinance? No? Okay, roll call.
Wees?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Leibel?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Sleep?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Next.
First, we have a resolution to authorize the Mental Health and Recovery Service Board of Seneca, Ottawa, Sandusky and White Dot Counties to be designated the entity that allocates suspending of the opioid settlement funds and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I asked Executive Director of the Mental Health Recovery Services Board to be here today. He's an attendance to give a brief presentation to council and an explanation. Mayor John Crowe.
Hey, good evening. Uh, thank you for having me, allow me to speak. Uh, I do have two pieces of information that I can pass around, if that's okay?
Please.
One for each member?
Before I stop, I, I do have two comments I want to make. One, thank you for supporting our mental health recovery levy last November. Uh, as you know, we had the renewal here in Sandusky County, and we passed. And I'm glad to say that we passed with the highest percentage in the state of Ohio as a renewal. So, really, really glad, and, and thank you for that. And the second announcement I'd like to make before I go into my presentation is Fremont Connections, previously known as Village House, here in the city of Fremont. We have an open house on October 3rd, 4:00 PM, if you would like to join. And we will start operations on October 7th. So again, it's called now Fremont Connections. As a board in partnership with other public entities in Sandusky County, we invested close to $200,000 in renovations. And I think you'll be, uh, really glad and surprised to see what we have done to that facility. So again, open house is October 3rd, 4 to 7:00 PM, and operations of the place will start October 7th. I don't know the, sorry.
It's on Rossin Avenue?
Yes, correct.
Behind St. Adams?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes. So let's talk about the opioid litigation lawsuit, which is, uh, the resolution here in front of you. Uh, I'll give you a short summary, and, and you'll see that there. Uh, when the state of Ohio settled with the, uh, for the opioid litigation with various pharmaceutical companies, they actually started where, uh, many municipalities and counties all agreed to join the suit in partnership with Ohio Attorney General's Office and have a combined lawsuit for these pharmaceutical companies for the settlement dollars. That happened. When that happened, uh, the municipalities and the counties and Ohio AG agreed to divide the money in three buckets. Okay? Uh, 10, uh, 15%, sorry, stays with the state of Ohio. 15% insists to stay with the state of Ohio. 30% is to go based on the formula to local municipalities, which includes cities and counties. There's the money you're talking about that you have in front of you. And 55% of the money is to go to a statewide foundation, which is called One Ohio Recovery Foundation. One of the papers you have in front of you are the maps. That 55% is divided in regions, and is supposed to go to those regions, allocated to those regions. Sandusky County is in a region with seven other counties, they're in Northwest Ohio. We are region 17. I am the chair for the reason, the region for that eight counties. So if you want me to talk more about the 55%, I can, but I don't even want to get into that. The 30%, which is the money the city of Fremont received, and Sandusky County Commissioners received, and many cities throughout the state of Ohio and counties received, is really the funds you have in front of you. Uh, it is my understanding that, I believe you guys received approximately $69,000 in total last year and this year. These funds are to come for approximately 18 years together. Uh, so you have approximately 15, 16 years left. Uh, we do know that the funds that we received last year was a combination of year one and year two. So you probably have a little bit more than two years' worth of funds that, that you receive as a city. Uh, these funds are to be used for specific purposes. When this MOU was agreed by the state of Ohio, by the municipality, by the counties, uh, they agreed to what's called abeyment strategies. There are 10 pages, abeyment strategies, of what the money can be used for. So for example, the previous presentation you had, you cannot take those money for cemetery improvements, okay? You just cannot. This is very much specific to opioid or drugs or mental health prevention, education, treatment and recovery supports. Okay, it's very specific. Uh, we have been in the 10-page abeyment strategies, but, uh, One Ohio Recovery Foundation has a very nice website that you can see all the information that's there, okay, and what exactly that can be used for. Uh, the first they come to the cities, there are a few rules that I think you should, you need to be aware. One, the city can actually, what I call, "sit on the money." So you don't have a tie for them. It's not the money that come in 2024, you gotta spend them in '24. Okay? The money that came in '23, you didn't have to spend them in '23. So the municipalities and the county can actually sit on the money a little bit, if they want to.
How long?
You don't have a time.
No time limit?
There's no time limit. Okay? When the monies were initially received, the municipalities were actually allowed to go and cover previous expenses. So if you had a program in a city, they fall under abeyment strategies, then maybe you start it two years before you receive the money, you could account it against previous expenditures. Okay, so there's one thing to know. Uh, the second thing to know is that it's totally the decision of you. There is not a police chief, or even a mental health board, or a judge, or anybody else. That's totally strict, the decision of the mayor and the council on what you guys are gonna do with these funds. Uh, I know many cities in my board district, in the four counties I talked to, are now having discussions on how to use the money and in what programs. In Seneca County, I'll just give you examples now. In Seneca County, Seneca County Commissioners allocated 2/3 of all the funds they are getting to us as the Mental Health Recovery Service Board, ongoing for the duration of these funds. Uh, the counties are getting much more than you guys are getting. Uh, obviously, I believe it's based on population formula. Uh, I mentioned earlier Fremont Connections. I do want to say that Sandusky County Commissioners gave us some money for their project out of their opioid litigation funds. Okay? So Sandusky County Commissioners already tap into some of their funds as well.
Mr. Elder, uh, just real quick, for the council members that might not be familiar with Fremont Connections, could you just give them, uh, is everyone familiar with Fremont Connections?
Or Village House?
Village House, yeah.
Same thing, just change the name.
Right.
So it's a visitation and exchanges for families here in Sandusky County. Uh, obviously, many of those families might have struggled with drug addiction or mental health. We do both visitation and exchanges. There are three main changes you are making. Obviously, one would change the name. I can give you details why, if you're really interested. The second thing that we are doing is will be free service. Will be a free service. I know there was a barrier before under Village House. And number three, our goal is to open it seven days a week, okay? Many times, it's my understanding, a family struggled to make the time that was available, maybe because of work schedule and other commitments. So now we will make it available seven days a week, no cost, to Fremont and Sandusky County families. Obviously, it has to be scheduled. So we can't just keep people out of the building and nobody's coming. So everything has to be scheduled with the families. But that is what, what will be now Fremont Connections.
That's a big deal, because it used to be $20 each time that you did a visitation. So that's really good.
So for example, yes, Sandusky County Commissioners gave us some funds as the mental health board. We are, we are managing the project. We sign a lease, we send a church a five-year lease. I do want to thank the church too, they gave us a $1 a year lease for the next five years. Obviously, we invested approximately $200,000 out of ARPA funds into renovations of their facilities.
So setting up the One Ohio Plan, my skepticism is, does this keep the government from tapping into these funds for other budget shortfalls? To have this separate entity in the state of Ohio to tamper with your traces?
You're talking about the fifty-five percent?
Yes. Just discussing the need.
So that, that is a foundation. A statewide foundation, we have twenty-nine board members, I'm one of the twenty-nine.
Okay.
And we just went through our grant process and we allow non-for-profit, for-profit, and governmental entities to apply. So we allow governmental entities to apply. We are not mandated to give them funds or award them funds, but we allow governmental entities to apply.
But strictly for addiction services?
Addiction is a mental health, correct. Correct.
Good.
Correct. Correct.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple of comments. The council has questions.
Well, I have a question more, one more directed to our, to our resolution, another one directed to Mircha. The first one towards the resolution on the front, it specifies the amount for these calendar years, but in the back it says we're doing a hundred percent of all funds, including future funds. And I wasn't sure, you know, if we wanted to commit, you know, nearly a million dollars through a resolution like this moving forward, right? If this is equal to pass over fifteen years, all right?
Apparently, a standard resolution that they use, a process, that's what they gave us to use. I modified it to fit what we normally do, but it was something that they gave us that they've been doing statewide.
All right. So I was just curious about that.
I was too, I thought the same thing.
I also wondered if we could, if we're supposed to or could do that, you know?
Again, it's kind of like, you know, when we get the ODOT stuff and they say, here's what you got to do.
Right.
It seemed like it was the same kind of thing, because it had been passed and I think you gave it to us, it was like twenty different jurisdictions.
Correct. I think the city of Fremont will receive in total around half a million dollars altogether.
This is two years, all right.
That's probably three years, yes. Correct. And the payments will go down as the further you go.
Further go out.
Correct.
So then my other question then is it says that this money is going to be directed towards the city of Fremont. Do you have a way of keeping tabs on that? And what specifically is the board going to do to the city of Fremont? That we're giving it to the board instead of keeping it ourselves and running our own program?
Correct. So our, our goal is that if awarded these funds, for us to make sure that we invested in mental health and addiction services specific to city of Fremont. So if we have an agency out of Clyde, we'll probably not allow them to tap into these funds. We want to keep the funds locally in the city of Fremont. The second thing I'd like to do, if, if you as a city council will award these funds to the board, to give you an early report on where we are with finances and what services we're funding. Obviously, if you give the funds to us, we will also be able to sit on it. So what it means is if you give us $60,000 this year, then I mean we're going to spend it all. We might spend $39,000. But I still want to provide an early report to you guys and the mayor about what we invested funds into and what is our fiscal balance. We, we want to provide that to you and obviously to the public every year. But yes, we want to keep the funds locally to agencies that provide services in the city of Fremont for Fremont residents. And we have a way to keep track of that.
I yield.
The city of Fremont receives $62,941.44 in the year 2023 and 2024 and will continue to receive funds from this settlement for the next approximately fifteen years. What is going to be the amount? Is that an unknown fact right now or?
Yeah, it's unknown. We don't, and I tell you why we don't have, so the formula it is, is most of the settlements happen upfront and the further we go, closer to year seven and eight, the less funds we're going to get. But there are also a few ones that are pending now, a few that haven't been settled. So nobody really knows exactly how much we will be receiving in total.
And these funds were for the opioid settlements?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so.
Do you remember when we passed the ordinance to be part of the commemoration? We had a call, special meeting, so we didn't miss the deadline.
Okay, okay. I see what I was saying.
This is very similar to the tobacco settlement from many years ago.
So this, this amount that we're receiving or have collected might go down, question?
It is.
It will go down, yes. And that's approximately close to three years, just because year 2023 last year, it's almost like they gave two-year payments into one year. They are from some, some argument.
I, I got it.
The other question I had, based on Mr. Leibold's question, is if so, if Clyde, Bellevue, anywhere outside of the city of Fremont, those funds that we're talking about here would not be used. They'd go to the county to be supplemented with those funds, correct?
You mean for like, let's say Clyde or Bellevue residents?
Yeah.
Yeah, they will be supplemented with other funds, correct.
So they wouldn't be with, by touching on, they wouldn't be?
Correct, correct. We will not be, correct.
That's what I thought.
Madam President? May I just make a couple of comments in reference to this? First and foremost, Mircha, I thank you for coming tonight to present. Just a few things I'd like to touch on. Number one, I think here in Sandusky County, we're truly blessed to have Mircha as the executive director for many reasons, but for one of the reasons I'm going to touch on is he's representing Sandusky County and is the representative of the entire region seventeen. And we're lucky to have a working, established relationship with him that we have here today. Number two is the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, our agency, is also governed by a board as well. So there's oversight within the board and the city of Fremont does have some local residents that serve on that board. But most importantly, this agency and this board, they are truly in the weeds of working with the school system, the courts, all of the community agencies. And I believe, although I have a lot of experience working in this field as well, there's nobody better to decide where these funds should go than the mental health board of, I'm going to use the words Sandusky County, I know they represent many other counties. The other thing I'm going to say is we're very blessed as a county to have a mental health levy that we do already have in place. So with this agency taking control of these funds, they're able to utilize the dollars that they have coming in for mental health dollars from levy dollars. And they can utilize the dollars more wisely, so that way they know what dollars can be used for one service compared to another service, whether it's mental health with the youth, whether it's prevention, or whether it's education. They are directly involved with every organization, including city of Fremont, the municipal court, and all of the other organizations in the community. And we're not talking about significant amounts of dollars, we're talking about $69,000. I don't recommend holding on to it, because there's somebody tomorrow that might need a service that could utilize this money. And I believe in utilizing these dollars. And they're needed now, the services are needed now, and they've been needed now, and they've been needed yesterday. If there's agencies like what the sheriff's doing out there with the Ignite program, that's been, that's an incredible program that directly affects residents in our community. There's programs at the Fremont Connections program that's going to be reunited families that may have not otherwise been able to be reunited if this service was not in place. Mr. Leibold, and I know Mr. Melly for sure from a guardian of light of standpoint, has had many, many, many years of experience working in the judicial system. And I can't imagine the families that he's worked with as what he does in his other role and what barriers he's been up against not having that in this community and what?
That's how I knew about the $20 per visit.
What that's going to be like. So I would ask council to suspend Rule Four, to pass this, so that way the mental health board can have those dollars available. And you know what? If they won't, if they don't need them, they're not going to use them. And maybe they can sit on those dollars and utilize the other dollars. I just want to tell you that I've had extensive conversations with Mircha in reference to this, which was my reasoning for inviting him from the board here tonight to explain all of this to counsel. Nothing further, Madam President.
Madam President, I move that we suspend Rule Four.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Well, all right. Not that I don't trust the board or anything, but if we?
I think he's going to the same line.
Well, no, you can go. So did we talk with like Tricia Roberts and Judge Brudinsky? Is there anything our own court would want to utilize these dollars for?
I did talk to Mr. Brudinsky via email. And I told him via email that my recommendation was going to be for the board. And he just responded, I disagree. However, he didn't give a response. I asked him what his response would be. And when I talked to Mircha, it was learned of me that it wasn't the court's decision because the grant is a lawsuit that affects many people. But what I also learned is the court has access to these dollars as well. If Mr. Judge Brudinsky would like to utilize some of these dollars for the court, for example, for services, then I, they would just reach out to the mental health board and then they would still be able to have access to those dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
But right now, he disagrees with us giving them to the court.
He said he disagreed with my recommendation, but I disagree with his recommendation.
Well, sure.
So I, I believe that.
They have to work together regardless, right?
Yeah, yeah, my, my.
I assume they will, but they have to.
My statement, and my reason for disagreeing with the judge is, there's not anything against the judge, but these dollars weren't, it's nothing to do with the judicial side of things, it's to do with the public side of things. And these dollars should be able to be utilized, whether it's for a member of the court or whether it's a member of a different agency, or whether it's through Fremont City Schools through a prevention program, or through Family Children First Council, or towards some of the other organizations. For mental health and substance abuse, anyone that's affiliated with the court, whether it's directly or indirectly, would still have access to utilizing these dollars, whether you're in the court or whether you're out of the court. So if the court would choose to have a program in the court, which I'm not, I don't believe the court currently has a program for anything with that, maybe they do, I'm just not.
Well, yeah, but, but this is $60,000 the court could utilize if we didn't give it up.
It's $60,000.
In certain.
Well, well, sure, we can't just give it to them, but.
It would be their program, essentially.
I don't think also, I don't, I think that the court should go through the same process to apply for the funding as any other organization to have access to that. That's just my opinion.
All right, I, I guess.
I'm not against the court getting money.
Sure. I just think, you know, we pay for the court or because it's somewhat, and so I just would like a better conver, a bigger conversation.
Sure.
Before we just hand it over, okay?
Excuse me. It says that this money is supposed to be utilized for approved programs and services within the city of Fremont. Who approves these programs and services?
We will if the resolution passes.
So essentially, you control the program that the court wants to use it?
So our.
That's how I understand it.
We are, correct. We are a public entity and we also have. That's fine.
Well, no, I'm not trying to say.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, that's not what I'm saying. I know, I'm, I'm just trying to think. Yeah, yeah.
We, we have various regulations we have to follow according to Ohio law. So for example, if it's a certified, let's say outpatient counseling service, we will not be able to award to anybody who maybe has a small counseling business unless they stay certified. So we just have to be higher standards. With the courts, the mayor is right, the courts will qualify. If they outreach to the mental health board and say, hey, I want to use it for this, which match one of the abeyment strategies, absolutely they will qualify for, for the funding. I do want you guys to know, in the state of Ohio, they are what's called specialized courts, specialized dockets. And there are various courts, there are specialized dockets pertaining to drug courts or mental health courts or veteran courts. In Sandusky County, the only specialized docket that you have is in Clyde. Clyde has an OBI docket and drug court, that's it. City of Fremont or County Campbell, please, there's none. Okay, Josh Colas, start today, correct. So what that means, if you do as a court, a drug program to the individuals that come in front of you, Ohio Supreme Court is monitoring you and make sure you use best practices. Again, in Sandusky County, Clyde is the only court that has that. Ottawa County has a mental health veteran court and drug, or Seneca County has a drug court. But I'm just going to give you an idea of that. Another point I would like to make is that we will not charge any administrative fees. We are a public entity and we will not charge any administrative fees. So when I give you an early fiscal report, you're not going to see $62,000 minus $20,000 admin fees, no. Will go a hundred percent for services. So really what I'm doing as a mental health board, I'm kind of volunteering our expertise to manage this for you and for the city of Fremont, provide transparency to the public and give you an early report, and we'll be funding only evidence-based of the services.
Question from along though, isn't in, in the quest to pass the mental health levy that we've done twice now, weren't the courts one of the biggest advocates advocating for us to pass the mental health levy? So arguing about giving courts, do the courts get any money? But they're the ones who want to have mental health services to get the money. So we're just.
I mean, I, I feel like we always had a great relationship with the court, I'll be honest, we never, and this is public, we have never had a request from Fremont Municipal Court that we denied. But we don't really get requests from Fremont Municipal Court, just to make it clear. So when we award our levy funds, we have an early process to apply. Since I have been executive director, Fremont Municipal Court never applied. I just want to be on record on that.
Is there, is there a limit to the judicial system applying for?
No.
You know, like, we got sixty, let's say $62,000 and the judicial court wants $40,000 or whatever. Is there, there's no problem? You know, as long as they prove that it's needed for whatever.
Correct.
It would have to go to this program, right?
Right.
Right, but I, what I mean is, there's $62,000 and the judicial system wants 40, and so now we only got $22,000 left for the city or whatever.
I, I think, I think what my point is wondering, I'm just suggesting we should, I, I don't hear that there was sufficient conversation with the judge and the court and the probation officers to sit in this building. I would prefer a bigger conversation before I vote yes on this. That's all I'm suggesting, I don't, I think.
Well.
I think some of these other conversations are wandering, but that's all I'm suggesting, okay?
You brought up the judicial systems lawyer. Anyhow.
Just the one we fund in our budget.
I think that Judge Brudinsky, was he aware that you were going to have this on the docket tonight?
Yes, he was aware. He was aware, it was supposed to be on last night, and we didn't have enough people. But he, Chuck, what the mayor said, that's what he said, that he was not, he was not there.
So it must mean that he's going to be in agreement with whatever. Doesn't matter. That's what I mean, that's what I mean to him.
I move to suspend Rule Four.
I second.
I second. I second.
I second. Yeah. I, I just, go ahead, do it.
Sounds like they have to work together is what I.
Yeah.
You move to suspend rule four, Jim?
I second.
No? You said no?
No, Sleet did before all the whole conversations went on. And then Andy seconded.
Andy seconded.
It's alright, it's alright, just, it's cool.
Okay. So Jim Sleet, why should just. Any more questions about the suspension of rule four? No? Rule call.
Addie.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
My love.
No.
Reese? Yes. Sleet?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Please? No. Sorry.
That's why you gotta vote.
Okay. Okay, come on.
Nope, you got number three.
Yeah. Alright.
I lost it.
First we have an ordinance submitting appropriations within general fund one-on-one and the plan in emergency.
Counsel, thank you. This is pertaining to something I'm working on. I mean, apologize for not printing multiple copies, but I'm gonna take this and just have each councilman look at that and pass it down. Uh one of the things I've worked on the last couple of years, we've mentioned it here, probably not a lot, is me trying to recruit a hotel to come to Fremont. Uh if you remember, maybe two years ago, we had that sports tourism study. That kind of indicated a shortage of hotel space. When I go on my BR and E visits and I hear from companies, they complain about, you know, when they have conferences or they bring uh business partners in, the lack of hotel space or the tournaments. And so, and I occasionally take phone calls and seek different hotel chain, hotel chains out. Uh I recently came in contact with a company called Core Distinction Group and they conduct comprehensive hotel feasibility studies. And it is real similar to that of the housing study we did in twenty twenty-one. If you remember, uh we paid DeSalvo and Associates money to do a housing study. Uh and that housing study was vital to all the new houses we've seen in the last several years. What that study does is it tells you specifically your market, your market price points, sustainability. Uh what this study will do is they will come into town, they'll research Fremont, they'll interview us, they'll interview business leaders just to get our input. Uh we can submit possible locations of where hotels may, we might suggest where hotels may go. And um and then they can kind of come up with their own sites. Uh and it's just, is is that, it's a feasibility study, similar to the housing study. The other thing it does is a new hotel, in fact, I was on the phone this afternoon uh with a guy named Justin Summers, he's the county economic development director from Crumwell County. They just completed a housing study and they have a new hotel that broke around a few weeks ago.
A hotel study.
Uh the hotel study, did I say housing study? Yeah, hotel study, sorry. Uh and so that is a twelve million dollar build, the new hotel that's being built in their community. And uh and as part of my recruitment to try to get Fremont a new hotel, I've also learned similar to some of, you know, some of the same things I think I shared with you during uh when we did the housing study. Housing developers aren't, are hesitant to go into new communities if they don't have the data, if they don't have the feasibility study. And I think I shared the story with you with the housing developer out of Cleveland. He says, I don't go in any communities to build new houses without a tax payment, you know, without a housing study. And this is uh similar. So I've talked to different hotel chains and they've all kind of come back to, can I get a hotel study? Can they take your word on it? We need that. And so uh this budget amendment is for fifteen thousand dollars for us to enter into contract with this Core Distinction Group and their managing partner, uh Jessica Junker. Uh they're in Wisconsin, they do this nationwide, these housing studies. Uh and to do this study, it's uh fifteen thousand dollars. That's what the dollar amount of the budget amendment. And here's how it's broken down. We pay seventy-five hundred dollars now, they get started on the study. And if the study comes back and says, you don't need a hotel, we don't pay the other half. If the, the study comes back and says, oh yeah, you need a hotel and here's what we're recommending, here's what we're suggesting, based on the list of locations or demographics or traffic patterns, here's my, you know, that we'll score each site you give us, but we might recommend also the parts of town uh that we might think would be feasible. And so um that's the the nature of uh this budget amendment tonight. And so I'm asking you to suspend rule four and vote on this this evening so we can get under contract. It's a ninety day, it takes ninety days. And so really my timeframe is uh to do this study in the next ninety days and turn the calendar to twenty-five and then start uh sending this out to different hotels um to let them, let them know. And there are a couple of hotels that are in the growth, uh you know, and they're trying to grow. So, any questions? Do suspend rule four.
I second it.
Chris Leibl moves to suspend rule four, Angie Lee second. Any further questions on the suspension of rule four? Rule call.
Hi, Bob.
Yes.
Reese? Yes. Sleet?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Please? Yes. Addie?
Yep.
Elder?
Yes. Move to adopt.
Second.
John Elder moves to adopt, Christine Lee second. Any further comments or questions? No? Rule call.
Reese? Yes. Sleet?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Please? Yes. Addie?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
My love.
Yes. Counsel, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have anything to report on the committee tonight?
I do, I wanna give an update on the rec center.
Okay.
I wanted to talk about the parking lot renovations, I think was outstanding. I don't know if everybody's got a chance to get out there. Uh I think the beautification organization put some plants in the pottery area. I think it looks outstanding out there. Um they had close to nine hundred kids sign up for soccer, volleyball and football. It's the most they've ever had and I think it's a great tribute to the parents getting their kids out there and being active. Um October nineteenth is a trunk retreat. Uh businesses, businesses can register for twenty-five dollars. Um expecting a crowd of five to six thousand people. I think that's huge for our town. Uh there'll be a bounce house, a live DJ and LED pup pup course. So I'm giving an update on that. I think the rec center looks absolutely amazing, it was a quick turnaround. I think the landscaping looked like crap, I'm gonna be honest. Uh but it was a quick turnaround, I think it looks outstanding out there, so.
What's October nineteenth?
Truck retreat.
Ah, I don't know, when is October nineteenth?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday, there we go.
It's a Saturday.
My kid will be dressed up like a dinosaur.
Hmm. Be on the lookout. Anyone else?
Counsel, comment something else?
We can't do counsel comment.
I just have, I just have really one quick one.
Okay.
Um September thirtieth is a Monday, a week from this Monday, October twelfth is a Saturday, a week before trunk retreat. Um Phil Ross is hosting the middle school cross-country league meet and varsity high school league meet, which means um twelve schools coming to Fremont to Walsh Park during that time. And middle school brings every parent imaginable. So on Monday, September thirtieth, it'll be packed on that side of town. Just FYI, if you wonder why with all the other construction down on the old Kroger, on Fifth Street, on, you know, all that, it's, could be some walk jams on those two days, just FYI.
What time is the trunk retreat?
Um I'd have to look, I I wanna say it's like four or five P M.
It's like in like four.
I think it's four, I apologize, yeah. I know it's Saturday at the four.
Tell us that's the next meeting.
I will.
There's also a farmer's market this weekend and stuff happening down in the theater as well.
If you need to go down to that, farmer's market is awesome. I don't know how many of you members are going, but it is a good time. It is a very good time.
I was sorry I wasn't able to make it to the ribbon cutting ceremony for Autumn Urban.
I know I wasn't either.
You know, they've been in business with sixty-three.
Long time.
I saw it on Facebook, I think it was like something like.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two years, he said they've been over. Good job, mayor.
Benny?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna bring up, I don't know how many people here at the Liberty Center notice. They're always in need of things. They're in need of uh everything from the specified Heinz ketchup to liquid laundry detergent, uh gift cards like Kroger's or gas cards that helps the residents get to their jobs, um water. So they're always in need of something, canned goods, just to make that a point.
Liberty Center.
The Liberty Center. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Uh how about you, Mr. Melli?
Elder, no, I was like, your honor, sorry.
Uh Ken Frost.
I have nothing.
Mayor?
Uh just wanna update you on the reservoir. The reservoir is currently being resealed as we, well, not as we speak, it's probably been done for the day. Uh they were hopeful to be done by tomorrow, however, it's taking a little longer. So the reservoir, the reservoir will be closed till at least Monday. So it's gonna be completely sealed all the way around here in the market.
Oh, thanks, you're working through the weekend, ready?
Yep. Bob Gross?
Yeah, but I have a few things, I apologize.
Sorry, Bob.
Sorry, sorry, this is my own stuff. I um uh so I got my list here. So bringing up Autumn Urban, if you go by there, the sign up front, uh that is the original sign that was on the greenhouse and they installed it above the army there as part of their marketing. So there, and then there's a small sign in the window that was a Autumn Urban sign installed in their storefront too. So it's a nice blend of old with new. A couple of things I just wanna bring up, uh some more relevant ones. Uh the city has been working with the land bank and El Rancho Restaurant on State Street. Uh if you're familiar, it looks like it's one building, but it's really two separately deeded properties. And that property uh that is shared with El Rancho is vacant and it's in disrepair. The roof is caved in. Uh a grant came through and so starting next week, S and S is gonna be out there tearing that half of the building down. Uh and that is, and I'll bring that to to your attention because uh those business owners have, I feel bad for them because they've had to put up with a bad neighbor for a really long time. And just about the time they thought it was gonna get fixed, uh you know, something went wrong. I, you know, I didn't, you know, somebody else kind of came in at the last minute, bought it at a sheriff's sale and they chose not to do anything and just held everything up. And so I I know Ken Frost and the mayor and I have worked with the family quite a bit, quite a bit. Uh I think in last year, last uh, I can't remember, my timeframe's all messed up. I think it was springtime, I'm looking at you like you know. But uh springtime, our city crews went up there and picked up a lot of the garbage uh on the outside of the building to help clean up. And so um we've got other projects like that in the land bank. We've applied for some grants, some brownfield grants. Um the one thing, you know, I think we've all saw it in the, in the paper with the grant money to kind of redo State Street. And I know we've had some, some conversations about, uh hey, we need, here's our probably once in a lifetime to beautify State Street. And we talk about, and I, and I just have wild ideas and if a portion will come true, that'd be great. But I'm trying to, I, I told the mayor, my idea, if we get this hotel study done and if we can um get that hotel study, maybe we can mirror those together with some type of revitalization of of State Street. We could maybe get some older buildings on State Street to store, you know. So, you know, I think it's not, we, we wanna think bigger than just asphalt, right? We wanna get asphalt, we want some new uh curbs and new light poles. If there are some sites there that could be redeveloped and repurposed, if we could bring new businesses in there. Uh and so when we keep to think about that money and and redoing State Street, it's really more than just asphalt, in my opinion. And that's what I'm really trying to push for, for it to be more than just asphalt. I think we have an opportunity here to bring in a design firm, uh to put some concepts, you know. Uh you know, I went to the OEDA conference and it just seemed like every community had like a, you know, different groups kind of helping them with concepts and designs and engineering this and engineering that and uh some really neat ideas for their plans. And so uh I didn't grade them, I was one of them, but. And so I just, I I guess uh as we move forward in this, over the next couple of years, the state's, what I call, I don't know what we're calling it, other than the, you know, State Street project, uh I'm really wanna kind of repurpose State Street and here's, and add pieces to it other than just asphalt. Uh because I know when I first, uh businessman, when I first started doing this job, talking to a businessman and, and he says, Bob, I, I don't, I don't take business partners down State Street. I'm like, where do you take them? Not down State Street. And he's, he's shared with me a path that he's got, he sometimes goes in the township and goes down this road and up by the hospital and, you know, snakes down Front Street. And, and that has always stood out to me, um you know, that, you know, main corridor through town and we should be able to celebrate that and point to that and, and really kind of uh, you know, kind of some of the things we've done in downtown or on the east side. You know, the mayor challenged me today and I didn't even think about it because I just, you just, you know, you're in, you have the, like, I have this mental to-do list all the time, I didn't even think about the east side. So the mayor brought it up. But if you look at the east side, you know, there's more than a hundred new homes built on the east side in the last couple of years. Uh the county's getting ready to break ground on the old east side plaza for new county offices. Our new industrial park's on the east side. Crown is broken ground and they're heavily under construction for a new fifty thousand square foot warehouse space, east side. Uh obviously the new quick, uh you know, the new big mark, the uh oil change place. And those are just what you know of. There are conversations being had for more development on the east side as well. And so.
Is there a girl she starts, is there a girl she starts?
Yeah, there's talks.
Okay, Angie, they have everything.
Yeah?
And uh, and so, um, and, and so, well, I think it's okay for us to stop and pause and look around. And until the mayor challenged me to think about the east side, I, I didn't even honor him. I'm like, oh yeah, that, you know, everything I just listed, the new housing, the industrial park, you know, some of the new houses along the river up there by um Crown, the Crown's expansion and, and I, I. So I'm like, oh yeah, that, that's all, you know, I know we've laid some new asphalt the last couple of years uh on the east side and we've even, you know, and then we're, you know, I don't even know if I should bring it up, but I don't think it's a big bad deal to bring up Plough's Color. Like, we gotta get that property in use. And I think the original thought was from the engineers that could sit as green space and after a period of time sit in as green space, it would be okay. And, and honestly, uh it's, the site has improved, but not fast enough, good enough. And so I think we're, the city is, once again, we're partnering with the land bank to try to apply for some brownfield grants to help clean up the actual uh ground there at Plough's Country, Plough's Color, because, so we could get that repurposed in some, in some way. And so those are a couple of things we have going on. Next, next week we have a meeting, myself, Erica, Chief Hallby's and Mr. Melli. And we're uh talking about the vacant abandoned building ordinance. There were issues with that ordinance, basically, I think the fire department wasn't allowed to bill or keep track of the billing. And so we have to amend the ordinance and now the billing will come through the zoning because you, the zoning department has a mechanism to send bills. And we just need to change that and a few other minor things. And so we're sitting down next week with the thought of bringing that ordinance back to you so we can start holding those bad profit owners accountable. And I do think that had a positive impact when that was being enforced. I did share with you, and I'll, I'll try to wrap up here in the next minute or two, but I went to an OEDA conference, Ohio Economic Development Association conference. And these conferences are usually, you know, in Columbus. Uh this one was in Toledo, so I was able to go for a couple of days. And I learned a ton of information, which I shared to all of you in an email. And ten percent, all the industrial water use in the entire country is attributed to the state of Ohio. There was an entire session on water and industrial water and they just flat out said, northern part of Ohio is the best place to be if you're a large water user for manufacturing. And that is true because I came back from that conference and I got with Kylie out at the E D C and we looked at all the leads we had submitted and sure enough, forty percent of the leads were submitted to all large water users. Uh they talked about their states like Arizona or California or parts of those states, not the whole state, just parts of those states where you can't get water. And they, I mean, you can't even build houses there. You're prohibited from building new things until they figure out their water solution. So there are parts of the country um that just can't do new development. They, the other segment was talking about the logistics, the highways and rails, the ports coming in from Canada. And so we are blessed in that geographically where we sit, the access to water. Uh when I was there, uh if you remember, uh August eighth, we had a big presentation with Jobs Ohio and a group called Insight Consulting from South Carolina. It went very well and then a week or two, two weeks later, I was at this E D A conference and those folks who I don't know, they drove up from Columbus for the day, approached me and we just, you know, there was a girl named Pearl, a woman named Pearl, I said girl, she's about younger than me. So everybody's younger than me, I'm a girl, I don't know. It's old band talk, right? Uh but there's, uh and then there was a, or you know, a guy named Tao and they just kind of came up and said, Bob, we, we just wanna thank you again for that August eighth presentation. You were forty-first on our list, we're visiting sixty, and I'm telling you, you guys are as close as anybody to be an authenticated site. And I may have shared this, but I kind of want to share it again, because this is valuable to the economic, local economic impact that we have. When you become authenticated, Jobs Ohio takes over your marketing. When you become authenticated, you are pre-vetted, and you moved up to a preferred site. So right now, in the state of Ohio, not one site is authenticated, different communities are in different stages of being authenticated, but in this EDA conference, when they were doing a set through a seminar on authentication, they said the hardest thing is site control, you gotta get site control, well, we have site control, Fremont Belt and Corp owns the site in support, and in our agreement with the city and county, annexed, zoning, you know, the water, utilities, they talked about, you know, people think that they're ready, and they're not, and so they were just complimentary of us, and really, we have a couple, I think a couple environmental studies we need to do, and we'll get those done in the next couple of months, but we really have a unique opportunity here to be the first, and I think we will be at least one of the first, but I'm pushing to try to be the first in the, in the entire state of Ohio to be authenticated, because that, I think that adds value, and that helps, you know, the money we've put out for this industrial park, kind of just reassures our investment, we're doing everything we can to get a return on our investment, and we're not just put a pipe in the ground and walk away, and just hope somebody comes by some land, so. But I wanted to share that with you, and then, lastly, is, they talked about, there was, you know, they, you know, you go for an hour, and there's a session, and then they break out sessions, and then there was talk of the look of your community, and I guess maybe that's why I bring up State Street, you know, the look of your community, the good or bad, can affect economic development, you're, you know, we are being studied and scrutinized, and you don't even know it, by site selectors, by companies. And so, they have, they, and I don't think, I don't think the presenter meant to do it, but he talked about, you can have too many shops of a certain type, and that could be branded poorly for new investment, and he specifically mentioned smoke shops and vape shops, communities can have too many of those, and so, and then he shared where, he shared where other communities are taking this challenge on, and, and they're, you know, they're passing local legislation, and so I just wanted, not to say we're introducing any legislation, I think we should probably here soon, but, you know, but you guys are the legislative branch, and if you don't think we will, but I think the way it's governed is, you know, smoke or vape shops can't be near a school, a church, or parking, or a park, and then it must be at least a thousand feet apart, and so, you know, so that way you have some, some control, and as you walk down the street, it doesn't become, you know, smoke alley or vape alley, because all of a sudden, there's four or five shops all next to each other, but just something for us to think about, we might, you know, but I wanted to share those updates, because in a lot of ways, we are doing really great here in Fremont, the industrial park, very complimentary, in a lot of ways, we've accomplished a lot of the goals in the Think Fremont Plan, but we really need some new energy and new concepts and ideas moving forward for the, kind of, update our Think Fremont Plan, and so, and that may require, you know, I mean, we got this, you know, like a study like this, or a design group coming in, and, you know, this, you know, that, you go to these things, you get fresh ideas, but I just want to share that with you, but thank you for...
Before Mr. Gross is down, I was fortunate during that August eighth meeting, just one or a few times, I actually had nothing else to do, I could go, he's kind of underestimating kind of the feedback that he got from this group, they were really impressed, it was really, obviously, they were very, very impressed, because they let, they let Bob and the mayor know that a lot of communities say they have industrial parks, but all the things that businesses want before they come to industrial parks, they don't have, and we have it all set in place. Like, one of the examples was, you know, how much water usage do we, can we allow, you know, and most cities can't give a definitive number, but Bob's able to give a definitive number, right, so they know, so basically, other than dotting a couple i's and crossing a couple t's, you know, we're going to be the site that we can advertise, and so all the brochures that Bob has made up to hand out really are not needed, because this Jobs Ohio, this insight group, they take care of all that stuff for us, and the other takeaway that I got, we on council have a lot of habit, have a habit of always asking Bob any updates on businesses and so on, like grocery stores and things, they really emphasize that businesses that want to come to Fremont don't want anybody to know it, they want confidentiality, because we're not probably the only site they're looking at, right? So, we're in discussion, so if we let anything out, you know, out, that may jeopardize our chances of getting a business. And all the things that we've done on council have been a big asset to the development of this site, because we have zoned it in a way that only industry can go into the industrial park. They gave examples like, we may get impatient, "Bob, we need to get a business, we need to get a business," I know a daycare that wants to relocate there, they said that's the last thing you want, is something other than business in industrial park, and I think, you know, kudos to Bob for doing all the, and the economic development of Sineska County to do all the hard work they've done in preparing it, so, that was, I think, as far as I understand, that was a huge step in getting this park going, so congratulations.
Well, it truly is a team effort, I mean, I have brought to you legislation, ordinance, contracts, you guys have been great supporters to me, and I have shared that with groups, because that, believe it or not, comes up, hey, how, are, you know, do you, are you a city that says you want to grow, or do you really want to grow? And passing an ordinance, or passing a budget amendment, so we can sign an agreement to get a housing study is another example of the support that I have from this council that allows me to go do big economic development stuff, so thank you.
Bob, Dan Henning, three thirty-eight Jackson Street.
Okay.
Couple things that I think should be recognized, well, we already recognized Smith and his, his Quip Loop, added another bay, but his other building is going to be used too, and I understand that there is another, one of our local businesses is going to move into the muffler shop right down the street, at least that's, those are the plans, at least I saw the sign up, said we're moving to three twenty-one East State Street. Wondery Horvath, doing a lot of exterior renovation on their property. If anybody drives around the East Side, and it's not just there, it's a lot of other places, there are a lot of people who are working on their houses, there are a lot of people who are repairing porches, and facades, and all kinds of things, and sometimes we miss that, because we just assume that's always happening, but I don't know about you, but I see a resurgence in renovations of older properties in town, and it's just stunning to me.
Well, man, I just spoke to a gentleman today, lives on Court Street, putting sixty thousand dollars in his house.
Yeah, yeah, and the two little brick houses down by Chutz that are on Lynch, or, you know.
Those are beautiful.
And they're just...
That guy did a fabulous job.
And I've talked to that guy a couple of times, but the work he has done, the craftsmanship on the exterior of those two, I mean, they were, they were just buildings before, on an alley and on a street, and now, I think they're just two of the cutest little, I hate to use that term, I'm a guy.
They're very attractive.
They're extremely attractive, and nobody, I haven't heard people say much about it, but I just am in awe of that, and I see so many other people who are doing tremendous renovations of old properties, and even in the downtown area, I don't know, somebody remember what the downtown used to look like when you get south of the cinema? And I was driving someone around town recently, and I was pointing out, that used to be this, and then this company came in, and they completely renovated that building, and now look at it, you know, and I can point out buildings down in that area of town where things have just really changed, and we have a lot of people we could thank for doing that, but it just seems to me that there are a lot of people who are doing the little stuff that makes the town look better.
Chicken fried.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just in awe of the work and, and that people are doing on their homes, you know, it's just new, new driveways, new porches, new outbuildings, over on Lynch Street, they've got to put up brand new fence, and, man, his house just looks absolutely amazing, right by the railroad track. There's so many places in town where people are doing that, and I noticed that right away, because I'm always, I'm always, I'm a crazy guy, drive around, and I point out stuff to people, you know, because, because it's important to me to do that, and, and I'm just, I'm just in awe of the changes in the last eight to ten years in Fremont of people who are just knuckling down, using money that's available to them, and just doing stuff. We don't have a standard neighborhood in Fremont, we don't, nobody can say, "This is where all this style house is, and this is where this style house is," it's all mixed, and when you go like down in the valley, down near, getting close to Ballville, and you look at those homes that are close to Our Lady of the Pines, and you look at what some of those people have done to those homes down there, it's just, I mean, I'm, as I said, I'm in awe, I drive down there, and I remember, I used to work at the Lady of the Pines as a yardman when I was a kid, you know, I remember that stuff, and now, and then the new entrance to the Hayes Center, and, you know, there's just so much, it seems like it's little stuff, like Wondery Horvath, but when I drive by there, I think they're putting money into Fremont, and when somebody's going to move their business over to the East Side because they need that space, you know, it's just, you know, and I appreciate the city for encouraging that, I think it's just a whole new attitude.
Yeah, I think we go on and on, but I think there's Thursday Night Football on, so I'll...
You have a comment, in fact, I didn't see you sitting there until after I called on Bob.
Not receiving, thank you.
Move to adjourn. Let's see. Okay, Chris Seidel moves to adjourn, and everybody seconds.
Cleeck.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ali.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.